Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. This is a public hearing on Bill 3419, Taxation Development Impact Taxes, Affordable Housing, Housing Impact Fairness Act. This bill would alter the applicability of the development impact tax for public school improvements, establish an excise tax on certain demolitions and renovations of single-family homes, specify the use of certain tax revenues for affordable housing initiatives, and generally amend the law concerning taxation. A Government Operations Committee work session is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, January 16th. If you have not done so already, please hand your testimony to the clerk seated at the podium on your right and to my left. Please advise the clerk if you have a substitute speaker for your organization, or if you're the substitute speaker. When I call the group of speakers, please come up together to sit at the witness table and remain there until all have spoken and until I call the next panel of speakers. Please note the public hearings are the county council's time to hear from the public, and we do not necessarily ask questions during this process. Before beginning your presentation, please touch the red button at the base of the microphone, and when you have finished speaking, please cut your microphone off. When you begin your presentation, please state your name clearly for the record. You have three minutes to speak. A yellow light in front of you will come on when you have 30 seconds left, in which to finish your presentation, please end your statement when the red light comes on. If you have not finished your statement, the council will read your submitted written testimony and will consider it just as your oral testimony. And with that, we're going to call the first panel of speakers. And that's Mary Beck, Lisa Givoni, Andy Stern, Shane Rock, Mimi Brodsky-Cress, and Mary Kohler. And Mary, if you could begin, please.
Good evening, and thank you for having an opportunity to speak.
We need to go ahead.
I am Mary Beck, in the Office of Management and Budget. I'm the Capital Budget Manager, and I'm here to testify on behalf of the County Executive on Bill 3419, which will raise revenue to support affordable housing and public school improvements. This will be accomplished by creating an excise tax on the demolition or partial demolition of single-family homes, and by expanding the applicability of the development impact tax for public school improvements. The county council and the county executive are united in their desire to address the county's overwhelming affordable housing and school construction needs. But we simply can't make progress fast enough unless additional funds are available to support these goals. The majority of tear downs and rebuilds of older, single-family homes occurred in Bethesda, where schools such as Walter Johnson High School, Burning Tree Elementary, and Farmland Elementary are in moratorium. Bill 34-19 could raise revenue needed to accelerate these types of projects. When less expensive, older homes are demolished to make way for new, larger homes, we lose an existing supply of more affordable housing. In this case, it is appropriate to collect a fee, such as the one proposed in Bill 34-19, on the additional square footage to support Housing Initiative Fund affordable housing activities. Bill 34-19 also extends the applicability of schools' impact taxes to new, reconstructed, or altered, single-family homes that replace a home built before schools' impact taxes were established in 2004. Homes built before March 1, 2004 never paid school impact taxes, and Bill 34-19 would ensure that these altered and new replacement homes contribute funding to address school overcrowding. Preliminary discussions with council staff indicate that the additional funding provided by the bill will be significant. Once final estimates are determined, the county executive intends to incorporate these revenue assumptions into its upcoming FY 21 to '26 CIP budget. Executive branch staff will work with council staff on several technical issues to make the bill easier to implement, but the executive fundamentally supports the overall goals and approach of the bill as drafted. Thank you for your consideration of the executive's views.
Thank you very much. Lisa Givoni, please.
Hello, my name is Lisa Givoni, and I am the Housing Planner for the Montgomery County Planning Department. I am here to give a brief overview of planning staff's recommendations on Bill 3419, which is scheduled to go to the Planning Board on Thursday, December 5. The Planning Board will provide more thorough comments on the proposed bill through a letter provided at a later date during the open comment period. Planning staff understands the need to preserve and grow the county's affordable housing and to fund the capacity demands of growing public school enrollment. The Planning Department's own rental housing study recommended a demolition fee, which would incur a fee or cost for every demo multifamily unit to help mitigate the loss of affordable housing through demolition and redevelopment. And as far back as 2006, the Planning Department has been studying the issues of tear down and mansionization, highlighting how long we've been grappling with this issue. In relation to this bill, Planning Staff did a variety of research related to the student impact of replacement homes. Countywide, a single-family detached home, regardless of year built, currently generates .462 students on average. Using the same dataset, Planning Staff calculated the student generation rate for 848 replacement homes built between 2014 and 2018. On average, these homes were generating .557 students per home, or 20.6 percent more per home than the average single-family detached home across the county. As part of our analysis, we also look more broadly at student generation rates for homes that were recently built and recently sold. Our review of student enrollment data reveals relatively high rates of student generation associated with single-family homes that were recently built and single-family homes that were recently sold. All new, single-family detached homes built between 2014 and 2018, not just the ones that were replacement homes, were generating a student generation rate of .598. That is 7.4 percent more than replacement homes. And a review of single-family detached homes sold between 2014 and 2018 revealed that they were generating .6222 students per home, on average, in 2018, which is 11.7 percent more than replacement homes. That is to say, it's complicated. None of these alternative student generation rates are how we currently measure the impact of development on schools. And Planning Staff is currently underway, and that's why Jason Sartori could not be here tonight, with an update of our subdivision staging policy effort, including an investigation of alternative student generation rates that may have implications on how school impact are calculated or applied in the future. Planning Staff believes that the admirable concepts promoted in this bill should be evaluated more thoroughly and as part of a comprehensive review of school impact taxes with the 2020 update of the subdivision staging policy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andy Stern.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Stern. I am the current Chair of the Greater Bethesda Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank you, Councilmember Navarro, for your leadership over the past year, and Council President Katz. Congratulations, and best wishes for your new role as President of the Council.
Thank you.
Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of not just our chamber, but also the Montgomery County, Greater Silver Spring, and Gaithersburg Germantown Chambers of Commerce, and the thousands of employees and employers our organizations represent. We are all in strong opposition to Bill 34-19. The council recently adopted an economic development platform and repeatedly stressed the importance of Montgomery County's economic competitiveness with surrounding jurisdictions. This proposed legislation, additional taxes on county residents and small businesses, is in direct opposition to the platform that the council unanimously supported. When a property is torn down and redeveloped, it will be assessed at a higher value and face higher property taxes. With that taxing mechanism already in place to address infill redevelopment, the proposed new taxes are punitive, and we believe duplicative. Consider how the bill hurts small businesses. Infill home builders, the small businesses most directly affected by this legislation, succeed or fail at the mercy of the housing market. This tax will add tens of thousands of dollars to the budget for a renovation project and will deter home buyers from projects that require substantial renovations. Painters, plumbers, electricians, and other contractors will be drastically impacted. If those businesses suffer, close, relocate, stop growing, or simply shrink, the effect this bill has on our local economic ecosystem will far outweigh any added revenue created. We must grow the county's tax base. Bill 34-19 supporters speak of the dire need for additional funding for stool construction and affordable housing, and we agree. However, growing our county tax base should be the most important long-term strategy for acquiring additional funding. Further burdening the residents and small businesses is counterproductive in any effort to reach those goals. I'd like to conclude my remarks with a quote from Council President Katz's speech today. Quote, "As we work to increase our tax base, we must seize every opportunity to demonstrate that we are a great place to do business, that we are welcoming, that our regulations and our requirements are no more onerous than those in surrounding jurisdictions, and that we are responsible, responsive to the criticisms we hear," end quote. I urge you all to vote against Bill 3419, and thank you for your consideration of my remarks.
Thank you very much. Shane Rock.
Good evening. Interfaith Works supports Bill 3419, the Housing Impact Fairness Act. The act will generate vital funding for Montgomery County schools and new affordable housing. Given the critical lack of affordable homes in Montgomery County and the funding needed by schools to address the achievement gap, this is an important step towards greater equity and opportunity in our county. Tonight, 70 women will call the Interfaith Works Women's Center their temporary home. Many of those women should not be there. They should never have had to seek shelter in the first place. At least one quarter of the 70 women at any given time have jobs. They work cutting our hair, serving us food and drink, selling us food and household goods, caring for and teaching our children. They take home pay of $30,000 to $50,000 a year, about 30 to 50 percent of our area's median income. It's barely enough to afford an apartment if they can find one, and many cannot, because Montgomery County has a critical lack of housing affordable for our lower-wage workers. And because of the scarcity of this housing, women, men, and yes, children, in our community are homeless. The housing market offers profit incentive for the construction of market-rate housing, and we see the results all around us in construction of new condos, apartments, and single-family housing. Impact taxes are paid on those developments, providing much-needed funding for our schools and affordable housing, but it's not enough to meet the current and projected need for affordable housing in our county. Leveeing an impact tax on tear downs of older, existing, single-family homes will provide additional funding for affordable housing for which the housing market does not provide an adequate incentive. Hundreds of people are experiencing homelessness in our county tonight. We cannot end homelessness without more affordable housing. Approximately half of renters in Montgomery County are housing burdened, paying more than 30 percent of their income for housing. We face a housing affordability crisis in Montgomery County. The Housing Impact Fairness Act is a progressive and equitable step in the right direction. And thank you.
Thank you. Mimi Brodsky-Cress.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I am a lifelong resident of Montgomery County, attended public schools here, as did my children and husband. I am very involved with and support many affordable housing nonprofits, and will be serving over 200 men at MCCH Dinner on Thursday evening. I have also been a home builder in our county for almost 40 years. I understand and strongly support the need for more affordable housing, but I have serious concerns about the proposed bill. I disagree that this is correcting a loophole in the original legislation. The intent was always clear that replacing an older home with a newer one did not increase the impact on transportation or schools. The family in the original home had cars and children. Many new home buyers use Metro, have fewer children, and many are built for empty nesters. If you argue that buyers will pay more no matter what, that is a fallacy. Home buyers have budgets, and this added impact tax will reduce what they spend on their new home. While many don't believe that's an issue with infill buyers, not all of these homes are being built in Bethesda and Chevy Chase. There are builders who do tear downs in Rockville, Silver Spring, Wheaton. Adding $40,000 to $50,000 to the price of those homes or any spec home is not feasible. The market dictates what a new home can sell for, and this impact tax cannot just be added on to the price tag. And why would the county want to levy a tax that would potentially decrease the number of tear downs when it's a tremendous source of increased tax revenue? On average, the new homes pay double and sometimes triple the amount of property taxes that the original homeowner paid. Those increased taxes are paid year after year in perpetuity. As an example, properties that my company or our clients bought in 2013 have provided increased tax revenues since then of over $2 million. Rather than add another tax, why not look at this enormous windfall of money generated by infill building, and instead of going to the general fund, use a portion of that each year for the HIF, an affordable housing? This legislation will hurt small business owners in Montgomery County, builders like me, subcontractors and suppliers who work on new homes, and all their employees. These are not high-wage earners; they are tradesmen, office workers, and laborers, all working hard to make a decent living. I hope you will vote no on this bill, and please remember one of the critical components of the newly proposed county economic development platform: decrease the cost of doing business in the county and to promote the county's businesses and business climate. I believe this bill is antithetical to promoting business in Montgomery County and is the wrong way to fund affordable housing and education needs. This is not a money problem; it's an allocation problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Kohler.
Good evening. My name is Mary Kohler, and I am testifying on behalf of Montgomery Housing Alliance. MHA is a coalition of organizations focused on increasing the rate of affordable housing preservation and development in Montgomery County. MHA supports passage of the Housing Impact Fairness Act because it would provide much-needed revenue to the Housing Initiative Fund. The HIF helps meet the county's affordable housing need through both rental assistance and resources for housing preservation and development. But insufficient funding levels challenge the county's ability to adequately implement both of these functions of the HIF. Increased revenue for the HIF would allow the rental assistance program to reach a greater number of residents. Right now, there are approximately 3,000 very low-income households on the waiting list. This number undercounts the need, however, as the waiting list is currently frozen. Approximately 1,700 households do receive assistance, but the rate of subsidy has not kept pace with the county's increasingly expensive rental market. The maximum benefit level under the program is $200 per month. At the current two-bedroom fair market rent of $1,665, this benefit level would provide a household just 12 percent of its monthly rental payment. This means that even households who receive the maximum allowable benefit may still find themselves housing cost burdened. The HIF also provides capital for acquisition and development of affordable housing, but resource constraints mean that demand exceeds capacity to supply. The Metropolitan Council of Governments has found that, in order to meet need, Montgomery County must add 10,000 units above current forecasts. However, current resources support development of approximately 600 to 700 units per year. In order to meet the council's unanimously approved target of adding 10,000 units by 2030, developers need to more than double production levels but lack the capital to do so. Households in the county are struggling to afford homes now, and the need will only be amplified over the next decade. MHA recognizes and values the council's commitment toward investing $100 million into the HIF by 2022. For FY '20, only approximately $65 million in funding is approved. We cannot look solely to the general fund to make up this shortfall. The county needs to identify and support new and creative sources of revenue. The Housing Impact Fairness Act, which would generate an estimated $4.3 million annually for the HIF, represents one such source. These funds would help address growing need and make a very real difference in the lives of many low-income residents. Thank you for the opportunity to provide input as you consider this issue.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rice.
Thank you very much. Ms. Beck, I just had a very quick question for you, because I wanted to make sure I heard something correctly. You said that the county executive is going to assume that this bill has already passed and include that in his budget that he sends over?
Yes.
Has that ever happened before?
Yes.
Where a county executive assumes that a bill is going to pass and put that in their impending budget?
Yes, when they're supporting. That has happened before.
Okay, if you could let me know when that happened, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Glaz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for being here today. Sincerely, thank you for participating in a robust conversation about how we deal with our impact, how we help fund more affordable housing for the tens of thousands of residents of Montgomery County. But I just have one clarifying question. It's for Ms. Givoni. Just in your testimony, I think I heard you say that the Planning Department has discussed demolition fees as a way to support affordable housing?
Yes, in the 2016 rental housing study, we talked about a demolition fee for multifamily units, as it was a rental housing study. We did not proceed with that recommendation, but it was something that was presented to the county council in the concept of the study.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the panel. We're going to, there's no other questions. The next group, please, is Brenda McKay, Oscar Ceraris, Rob Gilroy, Chris Gillis, Lawrence Is Brenda McKay here?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you very much for your time, councilmembers. I'm speaking in opposition to this bill. I do not think that a lot of the arguments I've read for it are really based in sound reasoning, and I also don't think it's been thought out all the way. In researching it, I read that the projection figures as far as how much income it's going to create are based on looking at permits issued for tear downs in the last 10 years, and those are a number of permits issued when this tax didn't exist. And as this gets more expensive, there are going to be less tear downs. If something costs more, there's going to be less of it. So using that to kind of project it, it just sets a faulty number as far as how much income you can actually expect from this in the first place. Beyond that, the excise tax exists because when you have a new construction, you have a new community, new roads need to be built, sewers, all that good stuff, to support this new community, and new schools, not just adding students, but actually building new schools. We're talking about tear downs of homes in existing neighborhoods that already have all those. We don't need to build new roads, because there's a bigger house there. So I really don't think it's a very fair comparison. If you want to tax them, that's another thing, but saying that new construction homes are taxed, and so should these, is just not really a logical standpoint from the way I see it. So if we follow the logic that this is going to drop the number of tear downs that happen, as someone else testified earlier, it's going to decrease property tax revenue that the county gets because these new, bigger, more taxable homes just aren't going to exist anymore. Beyond that, it's going to have a huge impact on the number of home contractors, home builders. And unlike the examples in new constructions where these are big communities getting built that are built by national and large regional home builders, these are getting built by local, local businesses, local contractors, local taxpayers. So the impact that those people feel is going to be a lot greater. I do agree that Montgomery County has a very serious affordable housing problem. I just don't think that this is a solution for it, and just because you have a serious problem doesn't mean that it justifies doing anything to try to solve it. And the school overcrowding is also a very serious issue, but I don't think that you just buy me progress and development to try to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oscar Caseras.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Oscar, and I am testifying in support of Bill 3419, because I am personally affected by the lack of affordable housing in school capacity. I am proud of rather normal high school. I got great education, but there were problems. The school was overcrowded, and I had several problem classroom, except for the cafeteria and auditorium. The school is mostly the same as it was when it was built in the 1950s. I was happy to learn that Normal will be rebuilt in 2025. However, if there was more funding available, it maybe had been possible to upgrade the school sooner, so that my classmates, teachers, and I could have benefited from an environment that was better for teaching and learning. I support anything that will make it possible to fix up all the schools built new ones. And also, one of the thousands of residents who have benefited from the council investment in affordable housing. I live in Willow with my older sister in an apartment building that was pre-severed transfer county funds. My sister is unable to afford the rent on her own, so I helped her pay the rent with my money that I earned from my job. I assist manager at a restaurant. Together, we can afford to eat. I am attending a Montgomery College on a scholarship. I hope to study to become an electrician and make enough to buy a place of my own rent one day. I feel fortunate to have a safe and affordable home, but there are many other people in the county like me who have struggled to find affordable apartment and pay the rent. Everyone deserve to have the same opportunity that I had to live in a safe and affordable place. I hope the council will support Bill 3419, so our school can be improved and give more people like me a place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rob Gilroy. You need to touch the microphone. There we go. Thank you.
On now?
Yeah, it's on.
Good, all right. Good evening. My name is Rob Gilroy. Thank you for the opportunity to express my thoughts on the proposed bill before you. I'm a lifelong resident of Montgomery County. I grew up in Silver Spring, graduated from Sherwood High School, and attended Montgomery College. I've been in the building industry my entire adult life. I worked with the national builders locally and have been on my own for over 20 years. My office is here in Rockville, as I do the majority of my building in the city. I also build in Bethesda, Silver Spring, and throughout the county. I remember when the first temporary impact tax, as it was called for a short time, was enacted to help areas in Germantown and East Montgomery County. After many lawsuits, it was changed from a fee to a tax, and then grew like a weed. As a small builder, I always looked for the building opportunities in areas that were already established, as you don't have to go through the lengthy and expensive process of approvals and infrastructure construction. I will look for houses to renovate, tear down, rebuild, or the occasional vacant infill lot. After the impact tax started growing to all areas of the county for new development, being exempt from the impact tax for tear downs became a great way to reestablish dilapidated homes throughout the county. Some areas of the county grew a little faster than others, but it was a great way for the county to benefit from the revitalization of areas without any impact on the roads and schools. Tax revenues increased for perpetuality without any impact on existing infrastructure. Tear downs and rebuilds are truly a golden egg for the county. Mr. Glaz's proposal to eliminate the exemption to the impact tax is actually a penalty for revitalizing the older areas of the county and massively increasing the tax rolls forever. Mr. Glaz has lost sight of the rest of the county and his zeal to stick it to the builders in Bethesda and Chevy Chase. While this bill will have a tremendous impact on those areas, the real victims of this backward tax is the rest of the county. This bill will reduce the value of all existing rehabable houses in the county by at least $60,000. While that may not be a complete deal killer on a $2 million finished house, it's a cold slap in the face to all the homeowners in this county that have their life savings in the bank that they call their home. This tax will steal straight from their hands anywhere from 15 to 30 percent of their life savings. This is not a loophole, as he calls it. It's a safe harbor for homeowners and responsible infill builders. I would like to give you an example of the impact I have had as a small builder over the last five years. Eighty-plus-or-minus real estate transactions averaging $500,000 at 1 percent transfer and recordation is about $400,000. Forty rebuilt homes with additional average increased value of $500,000 equates to about $5,000 per year in tax rolls. That's $200,000 per year forever. This does not include the snowball effect.
Mr. Gilroy, thank you. We will read your rest of your testimony.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Next is Chris Gillis.
Good evening, Council President Katz and members of the council. My name is Chris Gillis, and I am testifying on behalf of MHP in support of Bill 3419. As you are all aware, Montgomery County is facing an unprecedented affordable housing crisis. Presently, there is a shortage of approximately 20,000 housing units for households earning 30 percent of area median income or less. As a result, tens of thousands of families are cost burdened, making it difficult to escape the cycle of poverty. What's more, the recent housing targets set by COG endorsed by the council estimated that the county will need to produce substantially more housing by 2030, especially for lower-income residents, to accommodate expected growth. In order to achieve these ambitious targets, the county must begin to find new dedicated revenue sources like the one being proposed. In 2017, the Montgomery County Rental Housing Study recommended that the county increase the HIF to 100 million annually. We believe this can be achieved before the end of this council's term in 2022. Currently, the only dedicated funding for the HIF is through recordation tax premiums and loan repayments. Absent new sources of funding, such as this impact tax or a large property tax increase, the county will struggle to narrow the affordability gap. According to the bill's sponsor, the According to the bill's sponsor, the impact tax would generate 4 million plus annually for the HIF. To put this into perspective, 4 million could fund the construction of an additional 80 units of affordable housing every year or double the number of households that receive rental assistance from 1,700 to 3,400. We appreciate the concerns raised by some that this impact tax will increase the cost of housing. As a nonprofit developer, we are very familiar with the cost of building new housing in the county. We would note, however, that teardowns in and of themselves impact housing affordability in high opportunity areas where there is already a shortage of affordable housing. That said, as the council deliberates on this bill, we encourage you to consider ways in which this impact tax could be offset by a reduction in regulations that contribute to the high cost of housing. In closing, we would like to thank Councilmember Glass and Jawando for introducing this bill and for working to identify new funding sources to support the county's affordable housing programs. We look forward to working with you to achieve our shared goals for housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lawrence K. Fritz.
Good evening. My name is Larry K. Fritz and I have lived in Montgomery County for over 50 years. For the past 27 years, I've owned a small business primarily focused on remodels and new homes from teardowns. I also chaired the MBIA Custom and Infill Builders Council of Montgomery County. The impact taxes proposed in this legislation on a replacement home from teardown amount to roughly $48,000 a permit. For a small business taking a risk on that venture, this tax would completely kill that project's viability. New home subdivisions must pay these impact taxes because in their case, there was nothing there before. Replacement homes have always been intentionally exempted for obvious reasons. A new home from teardown replaces another home that already has a long history of paying annual property taxes. Plus, the net student generation rate of less than 0.1 students is negligible compared to the over 59 students generated by 100 homes in a newly created subdivision. The loss of these projects would be devastating to hundreds of people and small businesses in our local economy. Superintendents, salvage workers, excavators, concrete finishers, framing carpenters, roofers, masons, insulators, and drywall hangers, trim carpenters, painters, cabinet makers, heating and cooling mechanics, plumbers, electricians, and local supply shops, tylers, carpet layers, furniture stagers, delivery truck drivers, house and window cleaners, and other service employees, laborers, landscapers, and movers all would be hurt. Before you tax all these small businesses and people into oblivion, please consider the unintended consequences this bill will have. All of these people contribute to the local economy in many profound ways and rely on this work to make a living. Through increased property taxes, a replacement home actually triples the contributions towards schools and affordable housing. $7,000 in annual property tax can turn into $21,000, and that payment is every year. Add the huge transfer and recordation taxes collected by the county at closing, and one replacement home over 10 years would generate $186,000 in extra county revenue without an impact tax. That's way better than the proposed $48,000 impact tax that would in turn kill that project. So don't think for a second that a replacement home is not paying their fair share. The synergy created for the local economy by the replacement home business alone is mind boggling. Replacement homes must be treated like a precious county resource to be highly encouraged. That is why this bill is a big mistake for the county and why it should be completely rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa McKenna, please.
Good evening. My name is Melissa McKenna. I would very much like to support Bill 3419. However, detail oriented person that I am, I have a few questions and want to make sure that residents in unusual circumstances, while rare, will be protected. My first impression, of course, more money for schools and affordable housing? Yes, please. But I have a few worries. Townhouses can't really increase substantially in size, so should they be included? How does this bill interact with the accessory dwelling unit just passed? What if it's only a minor size difference, say 150 square feet? First, please remember the municipalities. Unless I'm missing something or had too much turkey last week, Rockville and Gaithersburg would be exempt. That alone has me concerned about unintended consequences. A shift geographically by boutique developers and house flippers to target areas of more reasonably priced existing housing in East Rockville and around Old Town Gaithersburg. How many homes would be affected? Not in number per year, but total available stock. Common ownership communities took off in the 60s and have strict rules regarding what can be done to them. A quick check on DHCA's website lists 1,608 COCs and 139,000 units. That's a lot of excluded real estate. What about acts of God? You know, those freak accidents we don't plan on. Not all that many years ago, a few homes by the airpark were destroyed by a plane that fell out of the sky. Under this bill, anyone who had added a small 150 square foot addition or just gross area or renovated to add an in-law squeet would be taxed twice. Please consider a small size allowance. One step further, what about the American dream? As a teen in Fairfax, my family lived next door to a very small house back at, located near the back of the property. Our neighbor Raj Paul was an architect. He and his wife had immigrated from India and had a young son who was a real hoop. He could really play ball. They had chosen that property beside us well before we arrived, living in that small home while he designed and built their dream home. Yes, he literally designed his own home and he built, along with my stepbrother, that house. He was handsome, he was prepared to pay handsomely in future property tax. There will also always be changing tides in revenue. The increase in recordation tax approved in 2016 has yielded significant income because homeowners, home and condo, pay recordation tax not only when closing on a home, but also when refinancing a mortgage. In fact, recordation tax has exceeded impact tax revenue for MCPSCIP funds between FY19 and FY20. Finally, please be patient while we work on a revision to the subdivision staging policy. More students are generated by turnover in home sales than in home size, and recordation rates are capturing that. I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no questions, so we're going to go to the next panel. Thank you to the panel that is here. The next panel is Carter Wilson, Gregory Carr, Susanna Parker, Paul Geller, Melina Kaplan, Melina Kaplan, and Pia Morrison. Mr. Wilson, if you could please begin. Need to touch at the bottom of the debate, debate, bottom, there we go. Yep, it'll come on the red light. There we go.
There we go. Thank you. My name is Carter Wilson, president and owner of Carter, Inc. Builders. And I have been building infill homes or teardowns primarily in Bethesda, Chevy Chase for almost 40 years. Bill 3419 is a very bad idea and will have a severe impact on my small business as well as the small business subcontractors that I employ. There will be a loss of revenue to the general fund for Montgomery County if this legislation were to pass. The bill introduced by Mr. Glass and his proclamation that it would have created $100 million of revenue over the past 10 years and that it will generate $10 million a year in additional revenue is just not true. His statements about the revenue is purely speculative with no understanding of how a tax increase like this would affect the market for the construction of new infill homes. I build six to eight homes per year. If this bill were to pass, that could easily be reduced to three or four homes per year. And I would have to lay off one of my two employees or maybe both. As a result, the subcontractors that we employ to build these homes will have to lay off a large number of employees as well. This will be typical throughout the industry. The market for infill homes simply cannot absorb this tax without implications. Who will absorb this tax? The seller of the teardown, who is typically an elderly couple that will use this money for their retirement or stay in assisted living facility? Will it be the small business owner builder that cannot afford to absorb this tax because of the rising lot prices, rising cost of material labor, labor, and the consequences of the ability to sell new infill homes in a market that resists an increase in the sales price? There are limitations to what people are willing to pay for new homes. Builders cannot or will not build without an economic incentive. The county today enjoys a large increase in property tax from the old home to the new home. I have estimated conservatively over a 10-year period that this amount is approximately $24 million. Transfer recordation tax collected over 10 years is approximately $131 million. The 6% sales tax collected by the county on the materials purchased for a new home over 10 years is approximately $48 million. This legislation will result in fewer homes being built. It could be as high as 30, 40, or even up to 50% loss of new homes being built. My estimation is based on a real-life experience of participation in the infill building industry, where I've studied the market every day and have felt the pain of a slow market. Passing this bill would be a huge loss in revenue to the county. This bill is the ultimate anti-business legislation. I know the county council is working hard to change the county's reputation of being anti-business to a pro-business environment. Rejecting this bill is your chance to prove to the Washington metro area that you're working on providing a pro-business environment for our county.
We'll read the rest. Next is Gregory Carr, please.
Good evening. My name is Greg Carr and I'm an action in Montgomery core team leader at St. Mark Presbyterian Church. I am here today to urge you to support the Housing Impact Fairness Act. I've been a proud Montgomery County resident since 2011. Two key factors that led me and my wife to settle in the county were the diversity of the residents and the progressive local government. We were planning to have children. We now have a seven-year-old daughter and a four-year-old son, and it was and still is important to us that we raise them in an inclusive community that shares our values. Unfortunately, we also recognize that the high cost of housing threatens those features of Montgomery County that we value most. As we all know, Montgomery County is in an affordable housing crisis. As AIM leaders, we heard this when we spoke face-to-face with 3,000 people across the county and asked them what their most pressing issue was. Lack of affordable housing was the answer we heard and continue to hear more than any other. We hear it from the parents in the Title I elementary schools we organize with, where the choice can be between holding down three jobs to make rent and barely seeing your children, or moving in order to find more affordable housing. We hear it from seniors who are unable to retire here with their friends, family, and congregations. We hear it from teachers and school staff who can't afford to live where they work. We applaud the county council's resolution to support the bold target set by the council of governments to build 23,000 housing units by 2030. However, the real challenge will be making that goal a reality. There is no way to do that without significantly more funding for the Housing Initiative Fund. For over 20 years now, AIM has been meeting with county executives and county council members. Over these years, we have organized county residents and worked with elected officials to increase the Housing Initiative Fund to its current level. We have made steady but slow progress over that time. If we want to reach our goal of 23,000 new units by 2030, then we need to implement bigger and bolder initiatives. In 2030, will we look back and see that we accomplished what we promised? That we did what was necessary to ensure our county remained an inclusive community? Or will we be forced to acknowledge that we made a promise but lacked the will to follow through? To reach our goals, we're going to need new funding streams for affordable housing. That is why we are here tonight. This proposal will provide new revenue for the Housing Initiative Fund. This proposal will show that we are serious about attacking the crisis of affordable housing that we all acknowledge and discuss year after year. AIM supports this bill, and we ask that all of you on the council support this bill as an important step toward increasing access to affordable housing in Montgomery County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Susanna Parker.
Thank you. My name is Susanna Parker. I am 35 years old. I'm a resident of Garrett Forest, and my husband and I were both born and raised here in Montgomery County. We were married in 2013 and began house hunting in 2014 with a maximum budget of $350,000. We were living in downtown Silver Spring and wanted to stay in an urban area but couldn't find anything in our price range. We were lucky to find our current neighborhood. It's more suburban than we wanted, but it is still close to Kensington, North Bethesda, and Wheaton. The neighborhood was built in the 50s, lots of ranches and split levels, all about 1,000 square feet. The house was perfect for the two of us. We just had our first son this year, and so far it's fine for three. But as he gets older, and if we decide to have more children, the house just isn't going to work anymore. I mean, we have one bathroom and that's going to make mornings pretty tough. I'd like to stay in our neighborhood. We're right next to Rock Creek Park. We're close to two metro stations, and the elementary school is just a five-minute walk from our house. But in the next few years, we will have to decide between moving or doing major improvements like a big addition or even a complete rebuild. As I'm sure you all know, none of those options are exactly cheap. Adding an additional fee of up to $50,000 through what is essentially a double housing tax would almost certainly make it unaffordable for us, and so we would probably have to look elsewhere. It honestly feels like we're being punished for wanting to both grow our family and stay in our home. I don't want to move out of the county. I love it here. I'm a product of Montgomery County Public Schools, and I want my son to have the same opportunities that I have. I'm a supporter of our public schools and of housing affordability, but I don't believe the teardown tax is the right solution to increase their funding. It seems like it will only discourage young families like mine from making Montgomery County their permanent home. Therefore, I'm urging the council to vote against Bill 3419. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melina Kaplan, please.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak in opposition to Council Bill 3419, which creates a double tax on housing in Montgomery County. For the record, I'm Melina Kaplan. I've lived in the county for 23 years, first in Silver Spring and now in Kensington. While I learned about the bill, my immediate reaction was one of great concern. I agree that we need to be laser-focused on the affordable housing shortage, but this bill is counterintuitive. It purports to address affordable housing by making homes significantly more expensive. That doesn't make any sense to me. There are a number of issues with Council Bill 3419 that fall under the category of unintentional consequences. First, it increases the gap between the haves and the have-nots. Perhaps some people can afford to pay an additional $50,000 in taxes to make their homes more livable, but many won't be able to afford it. Second, this bill could seriously hurt our growing senior population. Picture a couple who purchased a home in the 1950s. Let's say it's a small bungalow, raised their children there, paid property taxes on the home for about 30 to 60 years. Now they're considering moving to a new home that's easier to navigate. They'll count on the proceeds from the resale of their home to help support them. How can they count on that, though, when this bill will decrease their nest egg by a serious amount? Why is this the case? Consider potential buyers who want to expand and update the old kitchen, create a family room where none currently exists, increase the size of the living and the dining rooms, make the bedroom larger, add new bathroom. Once they learn it'll cost them an additional $50,000 in taxes just to update the home, they'll cut their offer to this couple by about $50,000. How many people on fixed incomes will be able to afford that $50,000? Third, supporters of this bill say that teardowns will add more students to the school system, impacting school capacity. I understand, however, that one teardown only contributes to about 1/10 of a new student. You'd have to renovate 10 homes just to generate one additional student. The school capacity argument simply doesn't hold water. Finally, the custom home improvement industry is made up of small businesses, many of which are family-owned. Consider the chilling effect this bill would have on the livelihood of people like plumbers, electricians, and painters who make their living from a handful of home improvement projects each year. And we're not just talking about small business owners, but also the skilled craftspeople that work for them. How will they make a living if people decide against making improvements because of the increased costs resulting from this proposal? I'm proud to live in a county that places the health and welfare of its residents as the highest priority, but Council Bill 3419, while well-intentioned, does nothing to move us forward in that direction. For this reason, I respectfully encourage you to vote against Bill 3419. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul Geller, please.
Good evening, council members. Congratulations, Councilmember Katz, for being elected president, Councilmember Hucker, vice president, and a special thank you to you, Councilmember Navarro. You had a very challenging year. You stuck to your convictions and you made the magic happen in this county. I admire you. Many people admire you, and I thank you for your service. It was not easy. It was wonderful listening to your speech earlier today, and thank you. Councilmember Glass, Councilmember Jawando, I want to thank both of you for having the courage to introduce this legislation. This continues an effort that's been going on since 2016 to properly fund school construction in our county that's desperately needed. Now, as someone who has gone and asked everyone for every nickel possible in order to improve our county, because our schools are our lifeblood in this county, I can tell you there's very few sources of revenue that I would ever. few sources of revenue that I would ever ask you to go for. This was the last of a triad of revenue sources that we wanted to go for in 2016. The first was the recrodation tax, and I have to tell you, this is like deja vu all over again. In 2016, we had a huge crowd to talk about the recrodation tax, and when we came here, I had mentioned that all of this is over twenty-five cents per day increase in people's home value, in their taxes. Now, I would argue that their property values exceeded that by far. Yet, it was about twenty-five cents. It's always about the facts. Now, Montgomery County Planning Department just put out this report a few days ago, and in it, they estimate that there's about two hundred and nineteen replacement homes a year. That's a year! Now, I understand that that's going to affect some people, like our construction friend over there. However, the benefit that we get from this very small amount being assessed is tremendous. It's a tremendous benefit, because not only is it going to go to improving our schools, which many of us are working feverishly to get them to be more frugal with their projects, but it's also going to help people that deserve to have a nice home. I mean, many of you have been to the Bonafont at Silver Spring, right next to the library. It's a magnificent place for seniors. This is where part of this money's going to go to. Now, I also wanted to just remind everyone that this is a... This whole purpose of tonight is to receive public testimony. So, you're fielding ideas tonight. There's no vote? You're just basically getting ideas. Is nine dollars per square foot the right amount? Who's to say? Not me. But I know that this is the start of a conversation. I encourage both of you to stand with your convictions, as Councilmember Navarro bravely did for the whole year. This is a great bill, and I thank you very much for introducing it.
Thank you very much. Pia Morrison.
Dear members of the council, SCIU Local 500 represents more than twenty thousand members, many of whom are employed as support staff professionals in Montgomery County Public Schools, as well as others who are family childcare providers, and others still who are adjuncts at Maryland Community Colleges. We are all invested in the strength and vitality of our local public schools professionally, collectively, and personally. That's why we are proud to endorse the Housing Impact Fairness Act, Bill 3419. It's clear that until this legislation is finally passed, Montgomery County will continue to lose critical revenue necessary to meet the growing social needs of our county. These growing needs are felt by the support staff professionals, teachers, and students who spend their days in crowded temporary trailers rather than in schoolhouses. In Montgomery County Public Schools today, we have a record one hundred and sixty-four thousand enrolled students, and many of our schools are operating at over one hundred and twenty percent capacity. Some of these schools have not been updated in almost fifty years. Despite record enrollment and a population boom, that has not only outpaced school construction and renovation, but it's also worn thin the dedicated professionals who educate, assist, counsel, and transport our county's most precious assets, our children. Under current law, so long as a new house or development is built on a lot where an older structure was torn down, no impact fee is assessed, which is why it's come to be known as the tear-down loophole. It allows newly rebuilt homes to be excluded from any impact fee, despite the fact that they add twenty-five hundred square feet to floor plans and one million dollars to property values on average. Closing this loophole would apply a nine-dollar-per-square-foot surcharge for each additional square foot added to a tear-down's existing footprint, and no fee would be assessed on a home rebuilt at the same size. Already, the county assesses impact fees on new studio apartments, but doesn't do the same for larger family homes that are more likely to add students to the school system. This just doesn't make sense, and it's why Bill 3419 even has fairness in its name. It's not so much about making a new fee, but about removing a loophole from the existing development taxation scheme to make sure that development that makes an impact on our school's capacity pay for that impact. For all of these reasons and more, we respectfully ask that you please support and pass the Housing Impact Fairness Act. It's about equity for families and common sense for our tax code. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the panel. Councilmember Glass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a point of clarification, because I've heard it a few times, that the legislation does not apply an impact fee for extensions, additions, dormers, or bump outs.
Thank you. Thank you to the panel. Next, we're going to call Antonio Francis, Kimberly Golden-Brant, Silky Knopel, Anna Levy, Koki Adasi, and Deborah Schuman. And Antonio Francis, if you could please begin. Yeah, please. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Antonio Francis, owner of Francis Development and Infield Development and Construction Company, based out of downtown Silver Spring. Councilmembers Glass, approximately forty thousand dollar impact tax would have an unintended detrimental economic impact on downtown Silver Spring community, who has finally risen its profile due to trend of walkability and proximity to Washington, D.C. When Mr. Glass claims that the intent of a bill is to close a loophole, it is not. The studio, one-bedroom, and townhomes that he is on record referring to are developments with an increased burden on transportation and schools. Tearing down a single-family home for another single-family home, to me, is a like-and-kind burden, and should not be confused or compared with a parking lot conversion for over a hundred and fifty-plus-unit building that was prior seen around the county at Pike and Rose, in Wheaton, and in downtown Silver Spring. Families that have bought our homes and others in the area are able to drastically lower their transportation impact on the county's roads by walking, cycling, and using existing mass transit when convenient. The homes that we have torn down and rebuilding in the county contain less than two people on the buy-and-sale side with no impact to the school system due to lack of children. So, the stress of increased impact on the region is misguided in respect to our observations. The reason I've termed this as a direct threat on walkable Silver Spring is because in downtown Silver Spring, the typical housing stock candidate for a tear-down new build is a three-bedroom, one-bathroom home with a thousand square feet that has been neglected or unimproved since when it was put into service in 1925 to 1935. If this bill shall pass, I will be directly responsible to have to communicate to a homeowner that the value of her property has just gone down by approximately X amount of dollars. This will be a very tough conversation, considering that the existing homeowner more than likely could not afford to make the improvements over the years. Or I will have to communicate to the new homeowner that had to pass on a forty-plus-thousand-dollar tax bill for the purchase of a home that replaced a home that may have contained environmental hazards such as molden termites, unlivable cellars, two-by-two closets, or other undesirable lifestyle characteristics that are expected and sometimes even standard as we approach 2020. This will also be a tough conversation to explain how a home office is now impacting the transportation and the school system. Taking the opportunity to replace these energy inefficient and lifestyle inefficient homes should not be deemed a tax that simply threatens a homeowner's zoning and property rights. This tax would not equally affect other regions of the county with newer housing stock and more land, such as the one I grew up in over thirty-five years ago. I urge the council to consider not passing a bill that would have a bias impact to an aging region of a county that has historically been left behind and forgotten. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Kimberly Golden-Brant.
Good evening, President Katz and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kimberly Golden-Brant, and I am the Director of Smart Growth Maryland, which advocates for a more environmentally and economically sustainable future that creates opportunities for all Marylanders through better development patterns. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Coalition for Smarter Growth, the leading organization in the D.C. region advocating for walkable, inclusive, transit-oriented communities. We'd first like to thank you for your support for affordable housing, shown through your recent continued investment in the Housing Initiative Fund and adoption of the Council of Governments' housing targets. In addition to the legislation before us this evening, we welcome proposals to help get the Housing Initiative Fund to the hundred million per year goal and to help double housing production to meet the COG targets. We support the Housing Impact Fairness Act, given the existing and growing need for both affordable housing and school construction funding. This legislation ensures that all new construction contributes for its impact. In addition to our support for the bill, we offer the following amendments and considerations. First, to ensure that this legislation will result in a net gain in revenue over time, we welcome additional economic analysis. We also support the recrodation tax and increased property taxes associated with tear-downs and the subsequent new construction being dedicated to affordable housing and school construction. Next, we recognize that some neighborhoods need investment that includes improved housing stock. Therefore, we would support an amendment that exempts blighted or condemned properties. Finally, we ask the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee to consider exempting properties if an additional living unit is provided. This policy would be modeled after Portland, Oregon's residential infill project. Replacing one home with another does nothing to address the county's housing shortage. If we fail to build enough homes to meet demand, existing homes will continue to become more and more unaffordable. We thank you for your kind consideration of our comments on this legislation, and we ask for your support of the bill.
Thank you. Silky Knopel. Was that close?
Good evening. Yeah, very close. Silky Knopel. Good evening, President Katz. Congratulations and council members. My name is Silky Knopel. I'm the Chair of the Montgomery County Chapter of the Building Industry Association for Maryland. We represent over a hundred thousand employees of building industry companies across the state, and we strongly oppose Bill 3419. Our members include many tradesmen, plumbers, carpenters, electricians, roofers, remodelers, material suppliers. They are not high-wage earners. They are tradesmen. They are laborers. They are working class. They are working just like everyone else to make a decent living in Montgomery County. This proposal is short-sighted and fails to recognize the already-existing, long-term positive impact that replacement homes have on the county. First, the annual homeowner contributions to the county through property taxes actually triple on average with each new home that replaces an existing older home, and they continue in perpetuity. Second, if that weren't enough, each new home that replaces an existing home also contributes an average of fifty thousand dollars in transfer and recrodation taxes. That's three or four times higher than the condition when an existing home just transfers to a new buyer. A portion of those taxes are already allocated to the county and school CIP budgets through the existing county code. There's no loophole, and there is no need for an additional duplicative tax. Perhaps the council considered the allocation rates in light of the new resolution for economic development of those existing allocations in the code. In addition, new homes replace and replacing existing homes support fifty to two hundred direct jobs on each home site. There are builders and remodelers in the state that specialize in building replacement homes, and this bill threatens their very livelihood. All of these statements that I've made are tremendous benefits to the county, and they exist today. Applying the impact taxes paid by builders and developers for new homes to replacement homes is inconsistent with the original adopted definition, which stated, "Development impact tax for public school improvements means a tax imposed to defray a portion of the costs associated with public school improvements that are necessary to accommodate the enrollment generated by the development." Any difference in student generation is more than offset by transfer and recrodation taxes that are paid at the time of transfer already. We understand the council's desire to help solve the housing and school funding concerns, and we are in full support of that. We do not believe this bill is the right mechanism for it, and we strongly request that you give this bill an unfavorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Levy.
Good evening. My name is Anna Levy, and I'm a resident of Montgomery County, retired from the National Cancer Institute as a health science administrator. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am here on behalf of Jews United for Justice. As you may know, Jews United for Justice draws on the Jewish tradition of a commitment to justice to advance campaigns to improve the lives of the people who live in our local communities. I'm here to share JOFJ's support for Bill 3419, the Housing Impact Fairness Act. We appreciate the leadership of Councilmember Evan Glass as the sponsor of this bill, and Councilmember Will Juwondo for his support as co-sponsor. Jewish texts and tradition teach us that our society and the wealthy among us are obligated to provide for those who do not have shelter. We are also taught to prioritize study and learning. This bill combines these Jewish values by requiring that those with valuable property pay their fair share to support affordable housing and quality education for everyone in Montgomery County. In Montgomery County, there's a severe shortage of affordable housing options for our residents, and changing demographics mean that we need both new schools and renovations for our aging school facilities. There is also inequity baked into the way we tax properties. Impact fees are currently charged to small studio apartments and townhomes, as well as all new residential and commercial developments. But there's a loophole that exempts rebuilt and expanded homes from impact fees. These home expansions are primarily in the most affluent neighborhoods of the county, and on average, the renovations triple the size and resale value of the homes. We support equitable distribution of the tax burden so that everyone pays their fair share to support the increased infrastructure demands of our growing and changing county. Closing this loophole is predicted to generate an estimated ten million dollars per year in additional funds. This bill would direct that money to be used for school construction, rent subsidy programs, and affordable housing construction. Additional funds directed to the Housing Initiative Fund, projected at forty-three million dollars over ten years, will help the county reduce the number of low-income households on the waiting list for rental assistance. These additional funds will also enable the county to increase the number of affordable housing units and renovate existing substandard units to meet the ever-growing need. A record number of students are enrolled in Montgomery County Public Schools, which puts a heavy burden on educational facilities that are aging and in need of renovation, and also creates a need for new school construction. The estimated fifty-seven million dollars over ten years that would be generated by this legislation will supplement funding for and expedite these much-needed projects. Based on our Jewish values and our belief that all taxpayers should pay their fair share, we urge you to support Bill 3419. Thank you.
Thank you. Koki Adasi.
Good evening, Council President Katz, Vice President Hucker, and council members. My name is Koki Adasi, and I serve as the President of the Greater Capital Area Association of Realtors. We are the voice of Montgomery County's over twelve thousand Realtors, property managers, title attorneys, and other real estate professionals, and thousands of area consumers and residents. I am here to express G-Car's opposition to Bill 3419, taxation, development, impact taxes, and affordable housing. The Housing Impact Fairness Act, according to its sponsor, will level the impact tax playing field. What this goal seems to miss is that the playing field was tiered specifically to address each type of housing's impact and tax them appropriately. By adding that practice, Bill 3419 will have overwhelmingly negative consequence. The legislation would impose a school impact tax on houses built prior to March 1, 2004, but those properties have been paying property taxes for years, if not decades. School facilities constructed during that time were paid in part by those property tax dollars. Those properties should not have additional punitive fees levied on them for their share of the school system's facilities. It has been stated that there is a twenty percent increase in students between new homes and tear-downs. According to the Planning Department, that twenty percent increase comes out to a student generation rate increase of point one. Extrapolating that figure over the last ten years, you have four thousand four hundred tear-downs. We get four hundred and forty students. Spread over multiple clusters, that number is a negligible addition. We should not choose such a low threshold to trigger tens of thousands of dollars in additional taxes for thousands of homes. Housing affordability is a growing issue, and this policy would exacerbate that. Over the last ten years, those forty-four hundred tear-downs have generated tens of millions of dollars in higher property taxes, and in addition, tens of millions in revenue have been generated by transfer taxes and permitting fees on those projects. Bill 3419 will discourage tear-downs, and property tax revenues will see a significant fall. Proponents of the bill claim that this will generate a hundred million dollars in new revenue, but many have raised concerns with this projected figure. Bethesda Magazine found new revenues from this bill would be just over half that. Three years ago, the council raised the recrodation tax rates to fill a budget shortfall. We were told that it was the only solution. Today, we are here with a similar refrain, that we must again tax our way out of this problem. The real estate marketplace is not an endless well from which we can draw ever-increasing returns. There- There must be comprehensive solutions implemented that address the housing hurdles. We have not created further impediments and imperil for local small businesses. Thank you for your consideration for our association's perspectives. If you have questions any time, we'd be happy to address those. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Schuman, please.
Good evening, everyone. It's kind of a long evening, huh? I'm speaking on behalf of myself, a Montgomery County resident for a long time. I grew up here, went to BCC. My ex-husband and I moved back to Montgomery County so our daughter could go to Walt Whitman. I live in an infill development neighborhood, and since we moved into my house, it used to be an affordable neighborhood. Maybe not so much anymore. There were 102 houses in my neighborhood to start with. Now, we've had 12 teardowns and 17 new constructions. So, some of the houses that were torn down had a new construction. There were teardowns, and there were a few sort of infill lots. Actually, what happened was there were several oversized lots. So, one house was torn down, an affordable house, and three mansions were built, and that happened in four different places in my neighborhood. I don't really understand what's going on with the school situation. I mean, I live in western Montgomery County. Isn't that already developed? But Whitman is way overcrowded. It has all these portable classrooms in the parking lot, and Pile Junior High is the same, or Middle School is the same. That wasn't true when my daughter went to Whitman. There were no portable classrooms back then. As I see this, you guys have a tough situation, because this is sort of, you have a moral dilemma. There are a lot of arguments on the side of not taxing this development situation. You know, the builders are opposed to it, some of the homeowners might be hurt who are sellers, some of the buyers might be hurt who might have higher prices. But you're also looking at the community of the future, which is the workers of Montgomery County who can't afford to live here, and the students of Montgomery County who need to be educated here. So, in my opinion, this business of infill development should be paying its fair share. That's my opinion. That's it.
Thank you. There's no questions for this panel, so we're going to call the next panel. Thank the panel for being here. Carmen Narzario, Cynthia Alfaro, Chris Lloyd, Carlos Borges, Laura Stewart, and Elliot Antokas. I'm sure I didn't get one name right. Maybe I got Chris Lloyd's name right. Maybe, maybe. Close enough, right, Chris? Thank you all for being understanding on that. Carmen Nazario, please. Is Carmen Nazaro here? No? Cynthia Alfaro.
Good evening, Council President Katz and members of the county council. I would like to start by congratulating Council President Katz on his election and thanking Councilmember Navarro for her service as council president this past year. My name is Cynthia Alfaro, and I'm here tonight to speak against Bill 3419, which will impose taxes on teardowns throughout the county. I'm a first-generation American. I currently live with my parents in Silver Spring, and I'm hoping to purchase my own home nearby in the next few years. Once my parents retire, they will live six months in Peru and the other six months here. I hope that's the plan. I would love for them to come live with me half of the year, which means I will need a house that's large enough for everyone, including my grandmother, who I hope will be able to live with me as well. I would like to buy a small house at a reasonable price and invest some money in order to transform it into a larger home to accommodate the older generation. As I understand it, what's being proposed will add up to $50,000 to the price tag on top of the hundreds of thousands of dollars that I would have already spent in buying a new home. All I want to do is increase my house's footprint so that my parents and grandma can live with me, and that could cost me $50,000. This just doesn't seem fair. Some people may be able to afford another $50,000, but I'm not one of them. I'm totally sympathetic to the issues of affordable housing and public school improvements, and I know there's a big problem in the county, or I know that these are two big issues in the county, but I don't think this bill is the right way to solve this problem, or these problems. Thank you for your time this evening, and I hope that you take my comments into consideration and vote against Bill 3419.
Thank you. Chris Lloyd.
Thank you, President Katz. I'm here tonight on behalf of MCA in support of the Housing Impact Fairness Act. As we know, the needs for school construction and for affordable housing in our community are great. This legislation seeks to advance both those efforts. About eight hours ago, the State Board of Education released the findings from this year's school report cards from around the state. And while I think it's interesting because people will look at their individual school, what I found interesting in the presentation in Baltimore today was actually the school survey that was administered to all students across the state, and they broke it into about a dozen areas. The highest-ranked area, receiving seven out of possible 10 points from all the students on average, was student-staff relationships, which, for those of us who work with and stand with the company of children, I think speaks volumes to, we know that relationships matter with the children we serve. The lowest-ranked was physical environment. That was 2.6 out of 10. That was the average. I bring that up because I think that school environment matters quite a bit, and physical environment matters quite a bit. I can speak from my experience as a teacher at Blair. Moving from Sligo Creek, and the building on Sligo Creek, to the new Blair changed the entire character of the building, changed the entire character of who we were, and it added us a sense of worth and value, that our kids felt that they were valuable because they moved there. That was a big change, and it was brought about by a lot of, frankly, resources brought to bear. The second thing that I've been thinking a lot about is the statistics that we hear a lot about, and that is this, that we now have in Montgomery County, in our public school system, more children in poverty than the District of Columbia public school system has in total. So, when we talk about affordable housing, it's very real to so many of us as teachers. There's no doubt that it could benefit workers, but I'm more concerned at this point about how it benefits children in our care. In just a few short weeks, Annapolis is going to be bustling. House Bill 1 will be on the floor. It'll be dealing with school construction, and quite frankly, for those of us who have been involved in this over years, it will be the fight of our lives to get that money here. House Bill 1 is one part of that payment. House Bill 2 is the other part of that payment, because that's the blueprint that we're going to need to have passed. Both of those bills are going to have to invest significant state dollars, but they're also going to require local dollars. I appreciate the opportunity to present these comments to you tonight and for your consideration. I appreciate the work that you do as public servants and your attentiveness to our young scholars' needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Borges.
Good evening, council members. I'm Carlos Borges. My brother Tony Borges and I joined on voluntary construction. We are subcontractors in, as well as residents in Montgomery County. Our company frames roughly 800 homes last year, which are located here in Montgomery County. Our company creates local jobs for roughly 200 people and their families who we support. This proposed legislation will hurt small business owners like us in Montgomery County, subcontractors, vendors, suppliers, and partners who work on new homes here, and all our respective employers and their family. These are not high-wage earners. They are tradespeople, laborers, administrative people, all working hard to make a decent living in our county. I hope that we will vote no on this bill, as I believe that Bill 3419 is adverse to supporting business to Montgomery County and is the wrong way to funding our affordable housing needs. We strongly disagree with this proposed legislation, as we will have a major effect not just on our business, but on hundreds of small contractors, their employers, and their families, livelihoods rely on a few homes, construction business. I respectfully request an favorable report on Bill 3419.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Stewart, and I'm speaking on behalf of MCCPTA in support of Bill 3419. I would like to applaud Councilmember Glass and the co-sponsor, Councilmember Jawando, for putting forward a bill that will add revenue to two important priorities: building schools and affordable housing. Not surprisingly, I'm here to talk about the school side of this equation. I know you all understand the great need for school construction dollars. The BOE requested, the sixth-year CIP just went out yesterday to the county executive. The price tag seems high, $1.818 billion, but this only covers the minimum in order to keep up with the demands of aging infrastructure and significant increases in enrollment. We need approximately $790 million more in order to actually meet all of our major maintenance and capacity needs. What does this mean for kids? At our most overcrowded schools, lunch periods stretch from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Sometimes a third of the students in a school are in portable classrooms, which we know aren't as safe as the main building. Maintenance orders sometimes wait all year, and HVAC projects have to wait while kids are forced to wear coats in classrooms. Meanwhile, the county portion of the school CIP is being squeezed. Spending affordability guidelines have been adjusted down again this cycle. More developers are meeting the 25% MPDU threshold, so they are waived from paying school impact tax on those buildings. Buildings and enterprise zones are also waived. In fact, according to the packet provided for a previous Bill 519, over $60 million are being directly shifted from school construction budget. If you look at all permitted, planned, and pending projects in 2018, MDPUs are often built in already-dense areas, and the families that move into them will need seats in those schools. Zero impact taxes are paid to cover kids who move into the rest of these buildings, maybe into million-dollar condominiums. Bill 3419 is fair in that the school's construction budget will benefit, and more affordable housing can be funded. Some might say that the amount of money this generates for schools pales in comparison to the overall school budget. This is true, but because the school construction budget is so far behind, every million we can add is a delayed project that could be completed. I'm sure a couple of you remember, we were looking for just a few million dollars in certain years in order to keep Lee Middle School on track. So, yes, we need to find ways to add to the school budget, especially during time of contraction with the spending affordability guidelines. Finally, I would like to address the intended fairness of this bill. Is it fair to levy impact taxes on these new builds? These new houses are shown to produce 20% more students than the previous structures. We still need seats for those kids. All of this takes money. Please pass the Housing Impact Fairness Act, a bill that holds up to the values we want in our budget.
Thank you very much. We will read the rest of your testimony. Thank you. Next is Elliot Antokas.
Good evening. I'm Elliot Antokas. Thank you for allowing me to discuss my concerns with Council Bill 3419, a proposal that creates a double tax on existing homes. Before I start, I'd like to extend my congratulations to Councilmember Katz as you begin your term as council president, and Councilmember Navarro. I also want to thank you for your service as council president over the last year. I spent my formative years in Montgomery County. I work here, live here, and hope to continue living in this community in the future. The short supply of all housing, including affordable housing, is a huge issue in our county, and indeed in the region. I applaud Congressmember Glass for his efforts to address this problem. However, this legislation is not the right approach. As an accountant, I would like to point out that the proposed fees will facilitate a double taxation on existing homes and properties. The homes already incurred an impact fee upon construction and should not re-incur an additional tax. Supporters of the bill say that teardowns will add more students to the school system, impacting school capacity, as well as adding additional traffic and strain to our transportation infrastructure. This argument is illogical. Occupancy in a single-family home will not change materially. One family would move out, and another family would move in, increasing the school's burden by a factor of .1. In addition, the bill would only discourage new families from wanting to move into Montgomery County, as we do it... Excuse me. The end effect of this legislation will only increase the cost of housing in Montgomery County. The impact fees will provide an additional cost to both homeowners and developers. If the $50,000 impact fee is excised onto the construction, the $50,000 fee will only be passed onto the purchaser, as a homeowner or developer would need to recoup the cost. The end effect would be contrary to the stated purpose of reducing home prices in the region. The legislation will deter construction on homes in Montgomery County. This will have an adverse effect on the economics and job development for construction companies and their employees. In addition, investment income will flee from the county into other areas in the D.C. metropolitan area, further hindering our competition with other regions. There are many strategies to increase the supply of affordable housing in the county, but Bill 3419 isn't the answer. Therefore, I ask that you please consider voting against Council Bill 3419. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Jawando.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you all for your testimony, everyone before and after to come. Ms. Alfaro, I just wanted to address you directly, because we've heard this a couple of times. Any addition, bump-out, extension is not going to be taxed, okay? So, you would have to totally demolish your home.
There's no yelling out. Thank you.
I just want you to understand that, because there are many families in this community, mine included, who want to have intergenerational households, the same exact reason you talked about, and would want to add an addition to their home, and unless you tear down the house completely, you can add a whole addition and not be taxed. I just wanted you to understand that in the bill.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice, please.
So, while I disagree with my colleague in terms of his statement, that's actually not true. I'm just going to move ahead to something. And I just wanted to state, as Chair of the Education Committee, because I think that it's incredibly important. The cost of an elementary school is roughly about $30 million. The cost of a middle school is about $50, and the cost of our most recent Seneca Valley High School is roughly between $150 and $170 million. We still have some last-minute estimates to go with in terms of the total purchase. So, I would just say that it's incredibly helpful for us, especially when we're talking in Annapolis, about asking for additional school construction, to not make it seem as though this bill is a panacea for us in affecting school construction. Please, let's not let that be the message that goes to our legislators in Annapolis, that we've found a fix, a revenue fix for school construction in Montgomery County. Let's make sure that we're also highlighting the fact that our need is much greater than any kind of revenue that this will generate, even at the estimated numbers that they have. Even if I took the estimate of $100 million and divided that by 10 years, and then divided in half, split between the hip and split between MCPS, it's roughly about $5 million a year, which doesn't get us anywhere close to one school. So, let's just be very clear about that in terms of our messaging, because it's incredibly important, because I, as well as my colleagues like Chris Lloyd and others, who have already testified, have to go to Annapolis and defend Montgomery County in terms of saying that we need this additional revenue. I don't want the message to be that we've solved our school crisis by this bill. That is not what it's doing.
All right. Thank you to the panel. We're now going to call up the last panel for the evening, and it's going to be Dolly Kildee, Robert Sissel, Susan Grant, Brian Porto, Edward Amatetti, and Rodney Aker. Dolly, if you would like to begin, please.
My name is Dolly Kildee. I'm a resident of Gatesburg and a retired MCPS Para educator. I am testifying in support of Councilmember Glass's Housing Impact Fairness Act. My husband Brian and I moved our family to Maryland in 1974, when his job was transferred to Germantown. We could have moved to Frederick or another county, but we chose to live here because of the schools. All three of my children graduated from Gatesburg High School, went on to earn a college degree, and now work in professions where they serve the community. Tonight, I am not going to address many of the adverse effects that teardown development has had on our county. I am not going to talk about how teardown homes harm our environment, our older neighborhoods, or the livelihoods of residents who suddenly find themselves living next to a denuded lot with the towering McMansion. I am going to talk about the relationship between teardown development and our schools. In the past decade, over 2,000 teardown homes have been built in the county, mostly in densely populated areas, adding thousands of students to the school system's roles. The developers of these homes pay no impact fees for the burden that they place on county taxpayers. Schools in the areas most impacted by teardown development are already strained. 8% of all teardowned construction occurs in Silver Spring. Within that area, Highland View Elementary has six portable classrooms, Woodland Elementary has seven, and Rolling Terrace Elementary has 10, while East Silver Spring Elementary has no portable classrooms... Spring Elementary has no portable classrooms, it has not been modernized since Jimmy Carter was in office. As someone who spent the bulk of her career in the classroom, I can assure you that children learn better in buildings that have been updated and are a permanent part of the school that they attend. Portable classrooms present a barrier to a child's ability to learn. The beneficiaries of the teardown industry should support this effort to build up our schools. It is in their own self-interest. For developers, it enhances a major selling point that lures buyers to Montgomery County, our schools. For purchasers, it protects and increases the value of their investment by supporting our community's greatest asset, our schools. Takedown developer Carter Wilson recently chided Councilmember Glass in a letter to the editor in The Post that ended with the admonition, "I have been building infill homes in Montgomery County for close to 40 years. How many has Mr. Glass built?" I'd like to answer that question. Zero. What Mr. Glass is building with this legislation is a stronger educational system, a better future for our children, and a more stable housing market for all Montgomery County residents. I ask that each of you think about our overcrowded schools and children in portables and vote yes on Bill 3419. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Sissel.
I thank the council for making it available for me to speak tonight. My name's Bob Sissel. I'm the Director of Montgomery Agricultural Producers. I would like to say, Sidney, congratulations. Tom, congratulations. And Nancy, thank you for a year of really hard work and great success. I appreciate it. On behalf of Montgomery Agricultural Producers, I'd like to say that as citizens of Montgomery County, the agricultural community recognizes the need to address the shortage of affordable housing throughout Montgomery County. We know it's a big issue, and we know that as citizens, we play a role in it also. We have reviewed carefully Bill 3419 and are concerned about adding additional taxes that are triggered by additional size, square footage of a teardown, and adding educational impact taxes that currently these types of projects would be exempt from. This seems like a double tax, when the homeowner will be paying increased real estate taxes every year after the new house is appraised. I think you've heard numbers tonight that when you triple the size of a house, you're going to more than triple the size of the annual tax base. We in the agricultural community are struggling with our property values and the lack of needs and markets for developers to use TDRs and BLT programs, which we were given as a way to compensate us when the agreserve was put together, and that was one way because of the zoning going from 1 to 5 acres to 1 to 25. We were told that was a way to help us through the difficult times. Unfortunately, that market for a receiving area has dried up, and we need help with that. This tax would put an unfair burden on a landowner or a farmer living in the agreserve on agriculturally-assessed land who wishes to rebuild an old farmhouse to make it more efficient and more manageable for their family. With the above concerns in mind, we cannot support Bill 3419 and ask for an unfavorable decision on the council on this bill. That's my written testimony. I do want to applaud both Councilmember Glass and Will. You're taking on a struggle, and I know it's important, and we want to help support it. I'm not sure that this is the way to do it. But as we all know, as bills move through committees, amendments happen, things change. We're here. We're willing to help you and work with you. Our concern, obviously, as an agricultural community, is the agreserve and the people that live there, which don't necessarily affect affordable housing. So I thank you for your time and make our organization available as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Grant, please.
Good evening. My name is Susan Grant, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight in favor of the Housing Impact Fairness Act, which would make Montgomery County's impact fees for new construction more equitable and would generate much-needed funds for school construction and affordable housing in our county. My two children currently attend Eastern Middle School in Silver Spring, a school that has been desperately in need of construction funds for many years. Our school's predicament illustrates the importance of the funding generated by the proposed measure. Eastern was built in 1951 and last renovated in 1976, when Gerald Ford was president. The aging building presents many obstacles to students' education and well-being. The school was built on a dirt foundation, resulting in repeated infestations of pests, which invade classrooms, lockers, and the cafeteria and destroy the gym floor. The media center floods from an unreliable heating and cooling system that my son describes as delivering only two temperatures, Arctic and surface of the sun. Sewage backs up on a regular basis in the inadequate and outdated bathrooms, and narrow hallways and stairwells are dangerously overcrowded when students change classes. A number of classrooms lack windows, forcing students and staff to spend hours in stuffy interior rooms without natural light. Despite the building's many challenges, there is a tremendous amount of learning going on at Eastern, but it is a daily challenge, and our students are keenly aware that many other children in other areas of the county do not have to face the same challenges in their new or newly renovated schools. In spite of all the major issues involving our crumbling building, Eastern has been repeatedly passed over for capital improvements due to a lack of school construction funding. Eastern has been on pass lists for capital improvements and even had money allocated for a design study at one point, only to have the rug yanked out from under them when the funding ran short. Superintendent Smith presented his current recommended CIP that acknowledged that Eastern needs a major building project. However, we were dismayed to see that the plan that was presented lacked construction funding for Eastern. Our community cannot continue to wait until some unspecified future date for a rebuild of a school that was erected almost 70 years ago. Unfortunately, Eastern Middle School is not unique in its desperate need for school construction funding. In Silver Spring alone, there are at least two more schools that have not been renovated in over 40 years. This underscores the importance of the Housing Impact Fairness Act, which would help relieve the backlog of school construction projects and send the message that all students in our county deserve adequate school facilities. I would like to also note that over 50% of Eastern's 1,014 students take part in the Free and Reduced Meals program. Although my testimony focuses on school construction funding, a significant number of Eastern families would also stand to benefit from the additional and much-needed funds that would be provided for affordable housing under this bill. Therefore, I respectfully urge council members to vote for fairness and equity by passing this vital measure. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration of this important issue.
Thank you. Ryan Porto. Edward Amatetti.
Good evening. Hope you all had a good Thanksgiving. I'm representing the Montgomery County Taxpayers League. The Taxpayers League is committed to tax fairness. This includes supporting efforts to better capture value of property improvements. This way, homeowners of unimproved properties are not subsidized those with improvements. We support Mr. Glass for taking lead to redress this. However, we're not able to support this bill as it's currently written. The following are our comments. Point number one: We would support amendments to treat major improvements involving substantial demolition of existing property as new construction and subjecting these to property taxes, not impact taxes, but property taxes above the charter limit under Section 305. Point number three: Concerning the proposal to assess impact taxes on property improvements for homes built prior to 2004, the taxpayers cannot support the bill as it's currently written. At the very least, the final bill should be amended to distinguish developers and flippers from owners who plan to continue living in the residence. Point number four: The Taxpayers League cannot support the proposed demolition excise tax. This is a tax upon a property tax on top of an impact tax. It's unfair. It's going to reduce economic activity, reduce the stock of housing, and probably reduce revenues to the county. Going back to number two, we recommend the county strongly consider steps to take over property assessments, improvement assessments, from the State Department of Taxation and Assessments, as is done in 48 states, 48 other states around the country, unless ESTAD is clearly demonstrating substantial improvement in timely and accurate assessments. The league estimates that this could generate tens of millions of dollars in revenues while improving equity in taxes. And we could do this all in return for the 10% of property taxes we share with the state for them not doing a very good job. Point number five: Finally, we urge a major review of the county's affordable housing programs to improve efficiency, remove substantial duplication, reduce risks, and determine the cost-effectiveness of the current programs. We are not meeting objectives. Whatever shape this bill takes, it will be one small step in addressing the complex and serious issue of affordable housing and school construction. We at the Taxpayers League hope we can have the opportunity to work with the council as you continue to take positive steps towards addressing affordable housing, and we are currently engaged in producing a report on affordable housing, similar to the currently released report on education that we produced. So we hope we can work with you on this. It's a serious issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker for the evening is Rodney Aker. Please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rodney Aker, and I'm here testifying on behalf of my company, Aker &amp; Sons, and our 55 employees. Our grandfather Lawrence Aker and my father Larry Aker started our company in 1961. My father Larry Aker is now 84 years old and still travels to work twice a week from Maryland's eastern shore. We are a small plumbing business located in Montgomery County and have operated here for almost 60 years. Our work includes residential plumbing with a focus on speculative and custom homes and renovations in Maryland, D.C., and Virginia. We are greatly concerned about the proposed impact tax levied on speculative and custom homes built on teardown lots. These homes represent 52% of our total business. If this bill passes and our custom builder clients in Montgomery County are forced to reduce the number of homes they build, our company will surely feel the pain. In 2019, we were employed in the development of 42 new spec homes, of which 24 were in Montgomery County. We employ 22 plumbers who worked exclusively on these 24 homes. These 24 homes represent 57% of the jobs in the division of our company. If this impact tax results in a drop in production of our custom home business, we will be forced to lay off nine to 11 plumbers. A drop of 50% would force us to look outside of Montgomery County if we were to continue in the speculative custom home business. We are a very small company, working to stay viable and remain in Montgomery County, offering good-paying jobs and secure employment to our plumbers. It is hard enough to constantly adjust to the rising cost of materials, labor, and labor year after year. But when our own government officials actively work against employers and small businesses, it motivates companies like Aker &amp; Sons to question why we stay here rather than go to Virginia. At Aker &amp; Sons, we call this impact tax legislation the "Unemployment Bill." We are all in support of affordable housing, but without a job, no housing is ever affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Please note that there is a tentative Government Operations Committee work session, tentatively scheduled for Thursday, January 16th. Please be careful driving home. Good night.